Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order in council chambers. I want to acknowledge all of our community and friends that are here, both in council chambers as well as across the hall in the committee of the whole room. So, thank you for being here. We will allow plenty of time for your voices to be heard, but we'll proceed with the agenda as written here. I do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance. Correct? So, next item is board appointments. Mayor's reappointment of Adrian Ritchie to the Human Rights Commission for a full two-year term to expire August 31st, 2025. The mayor's reappointment of Jose Castro to the Human Rights Commission for a full two-year term to expire August 31st, 2025. And the mayor's reappointment of Matt Stofan to the Human Rights Commission for a full two-year term to expire August 31st, 2025. Public comment is next. Chief, I will rely on you to keep that rolling, although we do have the three-minute time limit, so I may have, I'll be watching the clock that he resets each time. We'll take the first speaker.
Diane Moore.
Good evening. Do I need to give my address if it's already written? Okay. As a citizen of Moline, I would like to point out that I was appalled when I got the postcard in the mail, mainly because no name or organization was associated with it, and I would like you to take that into consideration. I'm a firm believer, if you believe in something, you say who you are, you back up and what you're saying. So, I was very concerned about that. So, I'm just asking you to vote what you feel is best for the citizens of Moline. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Paul Kresser.
Paul Kresser, 8315 51st Street Court, Coal Valley. Good evening. I live just up the hill from the proposed facility. I'm a retired environmental manager, having worked in this capacity at three major corporations for over forty years or so. Through this experience, much of it involving solid and hazardous waste management in six states, it is no surprise that the Moline City Council has done its homework to provide a detailed justification for a project not suited for the chosen location. Yes, I read the information from the experts describing all the precautions they will take regarding waste materials and their degradation products. The only conclusion I can draw is that this effort is simply another project that works on paper, but not in practice. While Moline will cash checks, we are the ones who pay the price. The documents filed in support of the project assumed that the garbage trucks can haul 500 tons of waste in, 500 out, with no loss along the way. A miraculous closed system that does not exist on the planet. Waste management was the second-largest tire retraining account when I worked at Dan Dagno Bridgestone. Many of my friends were field technicians that did the tire inspections. I can assure you, they can tell you what comes out of a garbage hole. It's not pretty. Residents and businesses along the route, and the existing businesses in the park, will be picking up trash depending on the wind direction. At least when from the south, we'll blow it up against the airport fence and we'll see how they like that. Odors are inevitable. Nice try on the ozone system, but this is an, this is equipment that will break down, and no one should be surprised when repairs just don't seem to be instantaneous. Grupo, a great neighbor to all of us, will bear the brunt of this. However, on those foggy days with no air movement, we all get to partake. For those who routinely travel 78th Avenue, you can get a glimpse of the LRS future by simply heading to Hy-Vee in Mylan. As you cross the creek and travel in front of Export Pack and the former Eagles Distribution Center, the horrible conditions of that pavement will be replicated for all of us due to the relentless damage inflicted by these trash haulers. Let's consider Moline's recent history of doing the wrong thing to grab some revenue. Lowe's Walmart complex sits in groundwater recharge area, maybe not technically precious wetlands, but what the heck, we're going to run our stormwater in there anyway. Putting LRS alongside the creek? What could go wrong? Let's just add tons of contaminated stormwater to the creek and continue with stagnation. Let's look south at the National Guard Army and the breathtaking soil erosion and actual ravine slopping that Moline allows because they don't want to bother their tenant farmer with simple soil conservation.
Thank you, Mr. Kresser. I'm so sorry. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Ray Carter.
Good evening. I would like to thank the mayor and the council members for the opportunity to speak tonight on the proposed application from Lake Shore Recycling Service for the siding of the new transfer station. I'm the general manager of Republic Services. In addition, I've been a resident of the Quad Cities for 22 years. My colleagues and I are honored that we have serviced the community for 25 years. Republic is a environmental service leader serving 14 million customers in 47 states. We lead our industry in safety, sustainability, ethics, and compliance. We are not here to criticize any business, but we are significantly different than, between how we operate compared to other companies in our industry. Safety and protection of the environment in the communities we serve are cornerstones of what we do. We have a proven track record in both of these areas. Our safety incident rate is 20% better than the industry average. We have the first polymer plant that we're opening up in Las Vegas, a revolutionary recycling facility that will allow us to manage plastic stream from curbside collection to production to delivery. This last month, we unveiled our first electric waste and collection truck. Republic Services offers the customers complete set of products and services, environmental services in the industry. Our customer focus and financial stability sets us apart from all our competitors. As a best-in-class operator, I will tell you that our company, we want to partner with you for future waste management needs. That brings us to the merits of the application today. We believe the application submitted by Lake Shore Recycling is insufficient. Simply put, the applicant has not shown that the transfer station is necessary to accommodate the waste disposal needs in this area. We already have three landfills within a 15-mile radius of Rock Island County's service area, and that contributes to about 100 years of landfill airspace. Given the existing landfill capacity, the application is inconsistent with Rock Island County's solid waste management plan. The plan states that the applicant must prove the facility is necessary to accommodate the solid waste needs of Rock Island County, and that has not happened. As a longstanding partner that cares about this community, I feel that it's necessary to enter these concerns in the proposed project and its operational feasibility into public record. As an industry leader, we cannot in good conscience sit back and watch this go down a worrisome path. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Matt Pivot. I'm the municipal manager at Republic Services. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. For the past year, LRS and the city of Moline have been working with some of the best consultants in the industry to get this transfer station project approved. These consultants were not hired to discover that sitting requirements could be met, they were hired to get the project approved. Back in January, one of the consultants addressed the RICMA board meeting, seeking the agency's endorsement of the plan. In that meeting, he had stated that Rock Island County is blessed to have not one, but two landfills located within the county. He then drew comparisons with his home county, Lake County, Illinois, and the fact that Lake County also has two landfills and a transfer station. He failed to point out that the population of Lake County is nearly 1 million residents compared to Rock Island County's 150,000. I never took the word blessed to mean there is a shortage or a need for work. When RICMA looked at the criteria of need and plan consistency, they issued two resolutions. The first was that there was no need for this facility. The second resolution was that the facility was not consistent with the waste management plan. The consultants argued that the local agency is wrong in determining what its needs are or what is consistent with the plan they adopted. The consultants pointed to the capacity of Upper Rock Island's landfill being 11 years, while ignoring the fact that the landfill has already acquired enough space to expand for almost 80 years. There is no shortage of waste disposal capacity in Rock Island County. They also failed to point out that the landfill this transfer station is intended to divert material to, in Atkinson, Illinois, is also only permitted for another 11 years. Local landfills provide landfill tax revenue to the county. Local landfills provide 100% of the funding to RICMA. Transfer stations provide neither of these benefits. While this facility may provide financial benefit to the city of Moline, the benefit will come at the expense of your neighboring communities and the partners the city has relied on for many years. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bob Marriott. I live at 2660 12th Street in Moline. As a Moline resident, I'm writing to you or stating that I'm not in support of the waste transfer station. As previously stated by Mr. Carter, one of the nine requirements that they have to meet is provide a need, that it's needed for our community. As he stated, we have over 100 years' worth of landfill capacity within a 15-mile radius of our community. So, by adding all of these additional semi-truck traffic, 30 miles one-way from here to Atkinson, Illinois, is also not a sustainable solution. The facility also must minimize the effect on the value of surrounding property. As CFO at Grupo Inc., we have two large facilities located across the street from the proposed transfer station. As a result, we will see a reduction in our market value of our properties. It will have an appealing effect on our employees at Grupo, and it will also have long-term effect on the, on the future developments in the, in the industrial park. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, thank you for your time this evening. Ben Leischer, Executive Director of Quad City Airport. I had an opportunity to provide some testimony during the hearing regarding being the lessor and owner of the property. We've managed industrial parks since 1974. I do want to amend, we've done some work, increased due diligence, had a chance to meet with Grupo to, to hear some of their concerns firsthand. As, as a longtime tenant, we take that seriously. One of the issues they raised were concerns around being able to maintain compliance with the lease and the siding requirements, which again, I came and said that's a primary concern. As an airport, our primary drive is, is public safety, safety and security and air operations. So, when this project was first announced as, as interest, we were very opposed, we weren't ever interested, but as soon as we started to look through what it actually was, we started to look at it and say, this is actually good for the community, does not, is not a detriment to the neighbors, not a detriment to the intended use of an industrial facility. I asked GeoZynTech, who is our consultant we retained, to, to help draft the covenants of the lease, to identify other facilities around the United States that have similar design features. They presented four facilities, three in the state of Illinois and one in New Mexico. I personally went to every facility and did an unannounced field audit of those facilities just as an interested person. I flew to Mexico and spent part of my day across from the facility, an industrial park, to look at it. And the one thing I can tell you is I was largely indifferent about the project. Development is good as long as it's not an adverse impact. But I can tell you from the level of due diligence we've gone through, my observations were even facilities that aren't built to this design standard, but are close to airports, so they have similar traits, and those were the cleanest areas in industrial parks. There was no odor. Those facilities were nicer than the other industrial uses of those facilities. They were adjacent to asphalt plants or concrete plants, which were much more of a nuisance to the area, just observations of noise, to odor, and to traffic. And so, I can say with a higher level of confidence that we've gone to an increased level of due diligence based on concerns raised by our, our tenants with Grupo. And after seeing that firsthand, again, I didn't make the announcement I was there. I was approached at least one occasion of why I was there in a vehicle across the street, but I feel much more comfortable after seeing it firsthand. Again, there's a lot of facts that go to the siding requirement, but seeing that as the lessor, we feel much more comfortable that not only are they have a strong lease, but we'll be able to have a facility that will be a good fit for that area.
Thank you very much.
And that is a matter of public record. Feel free to pull it up from the airport website.
Thank you.
Teresa Isaacson?
Hello, my name is Teresa Isaacson. My husband Chris and I are residents of the Indian Hills neighborhood and wish to declare our opposition to the LRS facility proposed for location on 47th Street in Mylan. The close proximity of a waste transfer station to our home will adversely affect not only our property values, but quality of life as a direct result of the noise, odor, traffic, and potential environmental damage to the creek that is the lifeblood for the wildlife in our surrounding area. We make this statement not as expert witnesses, but by using common sense and life experience. Furthermore, the traffic generated by trucks entering and exiting this facility will place excessive wear and tear on 78th Avenue and specifically the Case Creek Bridge. The Case Creek Bridge was identified in an IDOT inspection of December 2021 as being in an advanced state of deterioration. Thus, we feel tax dollars will be used to replace the failed infrastructure that will directly benefit the bottom line of the private entity, LRS. The traffic also generated by the LRS proposed facility would create a serious safety hazard to all traveling the two-lane 78th Avenue, especially the residents of our Indian Hills neighborhood, as our only entrance and exit to the neighborhood will intersect directly with the primary route to the proposed facility. Probability and the law of averages would strongly support that this 55 mile-per-hour stop sign-controlled intersection will become the site of multiple vehicle accidents as a result. Currently, it is rare to encounter opposing traffic at this intersection. At a minimum, we would encourage consideration of an entrance off the Mylan Beltway should, excuse me, for the required facility as it is designed and constructed to support heavy truck traffic. This would offset the impact to the Indian Bluff Road and Case Creek Bridge. While we acknowledge that we are not constituents of Moline, this facility will not be located within Moline proper and affects the surrounding community. We strongly feel that the matter should be vetted both by the Rock Island County Board and the city of Moline. Thank you for the opportunity to present our opposition to this proposed facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Hartley.
My name is Ann Hartley, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Public Art Commission. We would like City Council and Mayor Reapati to know that we are grateful for your support over the last few years. The Public Art Commission is excited about our partnership with Quad City Arts, a local nonprofit organization that specializes in all aspects of art in the community. Their expertise in public art has allowed us to plan ahead for any hurdles in our projects. Their assistance and the commission's hard work and dedication have brought us so close to our first major piece of public art. We could not be more thrilled to all be working together towards a shared goal, more public art in our community. We are excited to complete more projects after this major first start. This is only the beginning, and we could not do it without your support. Thank you for making public art a focus in our community.
Greg Ontiveras. Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. I'm Greg Ontiveras, the CEO and owner of Grupo. Having been the longtime tenant at the airport, their, their largest tenant, we, we were, I'm a little, you know, kind of baffled how we got here. You know, when we at Grupo choose our partners and, and, and our business, our business, people that we do business with, we look at, you know, really, you know, integrity, honesty, you know, those type of things that you, that you need in a healthy relationship, right? You know, on February 13th, the gentleman from, who's standing behind me here from LRS, KJ, and Ben came to a meeting with myself, Bob Marriott, Kevin Koteki, and he flat-out told me, he said, hey, you guys have been here a long time. He said, if you oppose this thing, we will pack our bags and we will leave. We don't want a big fight. Verbatim, what came out of his mouth. And now we're here. So, you know, I'm just, I'm very disappointed. I think that, you know, he represents a company that's in private equity. I don't know how much you guys know about private equity or what their long-term plan is, but their long-term plan is very short, and they will sell this facility. He will be gone, and we will be left to deal with whatever it is that, that, that they have, that they, you know, put on us here. So, I would like you to really think hard about, you know, who you're getting in business with and why you're getting in business with them, because it's, you know, I, I could go through everything everyone else said as well, about property values and the wrong use, you know, the wrong, the wrong spot for that use, but you've heard all that here today, but I'm, I'm very concerned about, you know, who, who, who Moline has chosen for their partner, so, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tom Keith. I'm from Moline, Illinois. I've been here before. Shakespeare said, "The lady does protest too much." And Alexander Haig said, "Let them protest all they want, as long as they pay their taxes." So, maybe the citizens should stop paying taxes, since our politicians and all men don't pay attention to them. As any way, I've been here before protesting against geoengineering, the fluoride in our water, the incoming police state, and other issues. I've had no reply at all. Our pleas seem to go in one ear and out the other. The landfill issues, I'm afraid, will end up the same way. The NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard controversy is one that will never go away. How about building neighborhood incinerations so this problem doesn't, doesn't go on and on? Or, or maybe we can stop throwing 30 to 40% of our food away, so we don't have to have them eat so many landfills. They say I'm a driller, but I'm not the only one. Thank you.
Dave Holmes.
Hi, my name is Dale Holmes. I don't have a prepared comment. I just think that what I know of this just seems like a bad idea, and with the number of people that are here wearing t-shirts out there, there's a lot of people that think this is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Kierowski.
Chief, do you have a helper?
Yeah. Gary Kierowski. And after Gary, I'm struggling to read his name. It's like, Portis? Cortez? So, it'll be after Gary. Okay. Gary did not, Gary did not appear. Portis Cortez. Chris Elliott is following. Is Cortez on the way? All right, so the next one would be Mary Ann, not leave a last name, so Mary Ann will need to declare her last name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Zimmerman, and my question is about recycle. We recycle things. I'm hearing here and there that a lot of the recycling used to come, China would take it, and now a lot of the recycling things are thrown away. And it's, you know, and we have to pay for that, and I don't think that, that's right. And my other question was, we used to be, Davenport Library, we can check books out if we bring them back. A long time ago, we could check books out at Bentendorf Library, and the employees at Bentendorf Library are blaming Moline for us not being able to check books out. I don't know what that issue is. It sounds like it's a blame game, and maybe it's not correct. He's shaking his head. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Huer. Jeff Huer, and then I believe we've got lots of people. So, we'll go Jeff Huer and then...
Hi, my name is Jeff Huer. Thank you for letting me speak today. I've been in the Quad Cities for, in business for about 45 years. I spoke at the other public hearing originally for this. And I've been in business, like I say, 45 years, 20, 22 of the last 45 have been in commercial real estate. I've worked with Lake Shore Recycling for the last three years or so on expansion of the Atkinson landfill. I've had nothing but good things to say about them. Stand-up people, they've done an excellent job. There's different ways to look at everything, good points, bad points, like anything else. But I would look at, for example, the TIF, they're not using the TIF. I talked to the head assessor for the county with 33 different townships. He said he's never had a business not apply for TIF. We know the FIESB that it happened years ago. We don't have to go over that. It's quite a, quite a deal. These people are going to subsidize that TIF with additional taxes that you negotiated with. I, I would say that would be a main concern of mine, those taxes, for something they had nothing to do with. I would look at also a different angle. I would say, one thing to keep top of mind, I guess that's the new narrative, there's no such thing as too much competition, and that's what this really is all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lourdes Cortez-Bretton. I have a concern, because I come from a different country, I have a concern if you're going to take, consider the citizen what they want, or you already have a decision, or you already have your rights. That's all in my concern. Thank you.
Lindsay Swetlik. Close? Close.
Good evening. Lindsay Swetlik. I live, I'm one of the neighbors to the airport, and we love our area. I understand that every business needs to find a location. I understand that when you are in business, there's a bottom line, there's, you know, we make money in business. I also understand when it comes to council meetings and people giving their opinions about things, a lot of times it gets kind of loud. We tend to not believe people. We tend to just want to have, you know, our own opinions, and we don't open our minds and listen. So, my one thing that I see throughout what we do here in the Quad Cities is that we love to welcome businesses in. We love to give them, you know, yes, you know, they're going to give us jobs, they're going to give us, you know, they're going to land here, and they're going to, you know, they're going to be part of our Quad City family. The problem with all of that is we never think about the infrastructure behind it. We saw it, we, we've seen it now with the 74 Bridge. We've got this beautiful bridge, but all of a sudden, it goes back down to two lanes, and you've got people who are driving radically. We have a community called, you know, Coal Valley, who has expanded, they've exploded in population, but their intersection right there by the airport is horrible. We have 78th Avenue that's two-lane, and all of a sudden, that is just going to be nothing but more traffic, yes, more accidents, you know that's going to happen, but now our roads are going to look like what, you know, the road looks like in, in front of X-Pak. And John... and John Deere. And then we have, yes, the smell, all those things. Whether we believe that or not, I mean, we're going to have smell. I mean, I smell the airport when huge jets go off, okay. But the traffic around here and forgetting about the infrastructure, and especially the parents who are trying their hardest to get their kids to school in the morning or to practice, it's important to have safety on our roads. It's important to remember that the residents are the ones that ultimately pay. So whether this goes through or not, I just want you guys to understand that the infrastructure is so much more important to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice Daley. Alice Daley. And then the final one after Alice is Elizabeth Colling.
Owen.
Owen. Okay, she'll be after the speaker.
Good evening.
Thank you.
This is Rich, and I'm Alice Daley. We live in Rock Island, but we heard about this through the Rock Island County Board, and they deemed it not necessary. We're 90 years old, and we've lived, if it's not necessary, we don't buy it. We make do with what we do. We feel that we know what it's like to have a transfer station next to you. We've lived in Moline most of our lives. We retired in Rock Island. Our son, who lives in Wisconsin, teaches at the Rockford Airport in an aviation school through Sioux City Valley, I think it is, Rock Valley College. For nine years, we've listened to him complain about the transfer station. First, it's the trucks come from Chicago. Their doors are open. Trash is flying out. Have you driven on 39 lately, any of you? I challenge you. Drive 39. Take the exit to the airport. It takes you to the back of the airport. There's public housing there. Those people have bags of garbage hanging from their trees. I don't think bags roll in trees. Please consider it. We're concerned about the environment. We're concerned about the traffic. We're concerned about the smell, the rodents, and we're concerned about our city and our children and our great-grandchildren and the children to come. This is not the way to move forward.
My name isn't on the list, but just to add something to that, there's some 56 trucks daily that are proposed to enter that commodity, and there's just that many, or maybe bigger trucks that are leaving in that area. So it's not going to reduce traffic. It's going to increase the traffic because whatever comes down to that transfer station has to go on then to the landfills. The landfills seem to be adequate. I've been told that they're good for 100 years. The system has worked well. Nothing proposed in a building that is supposed to be airtight and without odor or problems, that doesn't exist. That's going to be problems of a giant magnitude. You can count on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, and then Steve Young. This is Steve. So Elizabeth is next, and then Steve.
Mayor and board members, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm in opposition of this just because I don't think the city should be in the business of housing garbage. I know they're saying it's, we're not housing it, but we're housing it until they move it out. I also think that if we have a partner, I guess it's Republic and whatever other county landfill we have, what's wrong with what we've been doing? I mean, why is, does that not work anymore? If it's because of space in the landfill, it sounds like that, there's argument that that's not a problem. And wherever this, our garbage has to go to, they have to make space there somewhere. When they run out of space there and they say to us, "Well, we're going to have to pay more to haul your garbage and put it there," what do we do at that point? So I just, it just seems to me that it makes more sense to stay local with what we do. I don't think Republic's been a bad partner. I drive by their dump every day. They're picking up stuff all the time. It's clean, the road. And how will this affect, yeah, I think that there may be some new jobs created, but how will this affect the jobs we may be losing from people who live in the county or in the area, and we're giving our tax dollars to a business that's located out of there. Their drivers come from there. I'm not against business, you know, but I think we need to think a little bit broader about what the impact this is going to be. I don't think the payoff, you know, is worth it. I think we should stay local, and thank you for letting me speak.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I've never been to one of these before, so I'm a little unprepared. I didn't know how it all worked, so we're going to be just winging it a little bit. But anyway, I live up the hill from the property we're talking about. That's been pretty well covered, and I agree with most of these people with reference to why we don't want it there as a neighbor. How would you all like it if it was a block from your house? You probably wouldn't be too enthused either. But I'm going to speak to you about it in a different perspective, or from the airport perspective. I've been a pilot for over 40 years. I've flown all over the country. I don't care how well you seal this up. It will smell. Even if you can't smell it, I guarantee you that the turkey vultures will be there. This is directly underneath the traffic pattern through Moline Airport. I think you're opening yourself up to a potential liability, and somebody could get killed. So I think it needs to be considered. No one has said it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. I believe we have three emailed or written public comments that the clerk will read at this time, and I'll also keep that to three minutes.
Yes. First one is from Drew Sterling. He said, "I would like to go on record as against the proposed trash facility on Indian Bluff Road. I understand the rationale beside, behind this decision to court LRS to the city, but I think it is a decision driven by short-term thinking and impatience. If we choose to use the industrial park to bring a trash facility, we will struggle to bring additional businesses to the park, as demonstrated by Group O's public criticism of the decision. I know that it has been difficult to bring businesses there in the past, but it will only become more difficult if we make the site less appealing by bringing trash. Furthermore, we will have to consider how this will affect other funds in Moline. The daily grind of trucks going across the county will put an additional strain on the roads here, leading to taxpayers having to pay more than accounted for in the proposal. We will pay not just with money, but with time spent in traffic, both sitting behind trucks and waiting for road repairs, which will become more frequent. Furthermore, we will lose property value and population growth, as people will not want to live downwind of a trash facility or deal with these road issues. I think it would be for the best to listen to what the county has already said on the matter. Rickema voted no on this deal, saying it was unnecessary to the county. The city of Moline should vote no as well, and simply avoid all of this headache." And the next one is from Brad and Wendy Reed. "I am making a public comment against the waste transfer station proposed for 47th Street, Mylan, Illinois. I am a resident of 8303 47th Street, and I have enclosed a professional opinion from my Realtors stating my properties will go down. I have enclosed a report and pictures of Case Creek Bridge in being in poor condition, which is very worrisome for the amount of tonnage you want to cross it. The two other businesses that are across from the only entrance to Indian Hills do not have heavy truck traffic hauling garbage and hazardous waste, and have a combined work schedule of seven to five Monday through Friday, where the station will be able to operate any time and any day. I also enclose documents for those business hours. The traffic study that was done is not accurate due to the governor of Illinois's stay-at-home order. Most people had to work from home for the next year and even longer. I do not need to be an expert to know that I already hear some traffic at my house when I sit on my porch, and that is greatly going to increase with 130-plus trucks at that facility. I say no to the city of Moline, the Quad City Airport, and LRS on this proposed waste transfer site." Last comment is from Mary Schroeder. "There is a public safety health concern with the increased tonnage that would cross this structurally deficient bridge, and a failure of the bridge would significantly impact traffic flow. Case Creek Bridge, formerly known as 0813090, is a structurally deficient Illinois major connector road with advanced deterioration. The applicant was negligent in not researching the integrity of the bridge. I offer the following to show the structural number of the bridge, the erosion under the bridge foundation, as well as the inspection information. The traffic counts used were not indicative of normal traffic patterns or counts and should not be considered. The traffic opinion offered in Exhibit 5 was based on IDOT 2020 and traffic counts from September 2022. Governor Pritzker announced a statewide stay-at-home order due to the COVID-19 pandemic that took effect at 5:00 PM Saturday, March 21, 2020, and the governor did not end the public health emergency until May 11, 2023. Many employers were still allowing work from home during 2022 and even into early 2023. The increased noise will impact residential properties along 78th Avenue, and the applicant self-servingly excluded pictures of the residential side of 78th Avenue in Exhibit 5. In Exhibit 5, the applicant failed to provide a noise study, only assumptions. There was no testimony provided by the applicant supporting what noise activity takes place at Group O or Bull Machine, which are the businesses closest to the intersection of 47th Street and 78th Avenue. As a resident of 47th Street, I can factually state that neither business routinely conducts truck loading and unloading or operates heavy equipment to the extent described for this proposed waste transfer station. The traffic this proposed waste transfer station will bring in is not in character with the surrounding area. The operating hours for the proposed waste transfer station are not in character of the hours for either Bull Machine or Group O. The proposed waste transfer station hours are Monday through Friday, 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday. The weekend hours are not in character with Bull Machine or Group O. Furthermore, the other three caveats to the hours of operation indicate the proposed waste transfer station is basically a 24/7 operation. The facility will typically be closed on Sundays and holidays, and it will remain open past business hours for cleaning, and waste may be transferred out of the facility after 7:00 PM as needed. My research is showing that if a transfer station can be seen, heard, or smelled from a home, then it probably lowers property value, and that even if these concerns are addressed, just the large number of trucks traveling to the facility can have a negative impact on the property value. I have been in contact with a real estate professional who has agreed that the extra truck traffic would be annoying, and he does not feel the proposed facility meets the nine criteria."
Settle?
I briefly suffered from heat stroke, causing me to skip Cory Hart.
Okay.
I'll take the lead. I appreciate it. My name, thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you. My name's Cory Hart. I live in the Indian Bluff subdivision, and we've had a lot of people here that have talked to you about the anecdotal and personal stories that this would have on their lives, and all of which I agree with. But I'm here to talk to you about more regulatory requirements, right? So the land that the waste transfer station is proposed to be put on actually lies in or adjacent to a floodplain. That floodplain and the creeks around that floodplain feed into the Rock River. The Rock River, of course, feeds into the Mississippi River. The Mississippi River, of course, is regulated by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. So this facility is required to put in an environmental study with Corps of Engineers for approval prior to building. Have they put in an environmental request for a study to be done by the Corps of Engineers? I know you can't answer that, but I know the answer, the answer is that they have. So the reality is, is that the Lake Shore Recycling System hasn't even done their due diligence in terms of putting, doing their environmental study, the study that they proposed to you, and the approval, or the plan that you plan to approve today. So I request that you guys consider that in terms of your vote today, because the reality is, even if you vote yes, they're still going to have to do that study. That study takes years, and in this day and age is likely not to be approved in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That concludes our public comments, portion of the meeting. Just to inform all of the public that is here, we do have a regular meeting, the rest of our committee, the whole, et cetera. This topic that most of you have spoken about will not be coming back for a bit of time because our informationals will be at least 20 minutes long. So just if you needed to understand the flow of time this evening, know that we will probably be in committee of the whole portion of the meeting for a bit of time before we get to the regular meeting that this agenda item is on. Under questions on the agenda, which is our next item, just to clarify, there was a scrivener's error found uncorrected on page three of the attached draft of the August 15, 2023 COW council minutes. Alderperson Razak was corrected to Miss Seas. Okay? So we move to our COW agenda items. 6.1, a resolution amending the annual meeting schedule for 2023 to reflect the new meeting date and time of the public art commission to be set as the third Monday of each month at 3:30 PM effective October 16, 2023, and authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the amended 2023 annual meeting schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second. That's Schmidt and Castro. On discussion. It's just a calendar change. All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. 6.2, a resolution approving the special event application for the Dia de los Muertos parade scheduled for Saturday, October 28, 2023, that is sponsored by Mercado on Fifth, and closing certain streets more particularly described here into vehicular traffic.
Move to approve.
Second. It's Timmy and Finch. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
I had just a question about the route, which I know is following into our standard route, but seeing that that is now coming to like an end place that was in that blue parking lot, is that to prevent the doubling back, or how are people getting back to like where they started from where their vehicles are? Has that worked into the plan, or is that part of the plan from the event?
Before, do you want to come to the microphone? I think that's actually a question for our staff.
Yeah.
And I made clear, I will let you know, I made clear to Mr. Vitas that the event organizers must make clear there's no doubling back with the floats, et cetera. Like, it's a start at one's heart and an end at another. So I guess that would be up to you all to figure out with the participants, like...
How to get back?
Yeah.
I was thinking that because this is Moline, oh, sorry. I was under the impression that because this is, you know, Moline's designated route, that that would be decided by the committee, like how, you know, or unless you want us to figure that out. But it'll have to be...
We'll have to have the, Mr. Vitas, would you like to speak to this? Because it was not helpful during the parade that people started to double back, right? And so that's why the route says beginning and ending. So we need that followed through between staff and the event organizers.
We will work with them toward that end. I mean, that's the best thing I can offer at this point. I mean, the point of beginning, the ending point, and the length of the parade, we all talked about already, so we know what we have to deal with. And last year's parade was indicative of floats going one way, people going another, and, yeah, I mean, there's the ability to take the great American trail all the way back.
We do also have another...
We do also have another, like the Homecoming Parade starts and ends in one place, too. So, the, the folks on that event committee can help more clearly delineate all this, I believe.
Yeah.
But I had the same.
Like where walker, where groups of walkers should be going back to their cars and where.
Or whether they have to make arrangements to be picked up at the endpoint or, Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah, and I agree. I think it's something that we just need to make sure we're communicating correctly so that it can be communicated by the organizers. I do think that falls to our responsibility because, and these are our new routes. I know we're trying to work out the kinks of now that we've got those sort of established. So, I.
It's true.
So, we continue to do so and I think it's true. So, thank you.
I will say, if you guys aren't totally set on the route, we were a little disappointed at the length. There was a lot of, you know, concern that last year's parade was very short and this is only like a hundred feet longer or something like that. So, if we could go down to like Sixth Street, we'd be very happy. That's, that's another, I say Sixth Street because that's a through to back to Fifth Avenue to head back to the cars, but.
Thank you.
Up to you guys.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes. We move to our informationals. Seven point one, the twenty twenty-three August budget amendments, our annual chat. Ms. Barnes?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Do you want to lift that microphone up to you and then I'll, then you don't have to.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I am hoping to keep this to about fifteen to twenty minutes. We are going to be talking about the twenty-three budget as well as the twenty-four through twenty-six as we go into October. So, I'm going to try to give you a very high-level review. And you can follow along with me in my attachments. It starts on page two of the PDF. And I'm going to primarily concentrate on the two-page summary. The August twenty-three budget amendments that are before you reflect council action taken by resolution, inflationary adjustments, staffing changes, updated CIP projects, changes in capital, equipment, and vehicle costs, as well as the Evergreen Comp and Class Study that was before you a week or so ago for all of the non-union employees. These amendments before you is everything that we have gathered since the budget was adopted on December the sixth. Formal amendments adopted by council are required to reflect recent changes to the current budget and to avoid any adverse effect to the city's legal budgetary compliance. As we go through all this, I want you to know that there are no surprises here. You have heard about it in front of the council or you have heard it in other discussions. We are following the plan that the council adopted with very conservative spending and I would like to say that the city remains in excellent financial position and which is a very good thing as we head into the two thousand and twenty-four through the twenty-six budget discussions. One thing that I do want to point out that's important with these budget amendments is that the city is no longer legally required to budget for the police and fire pension funds. And very similar to the IMRF, which is the retirement funds for all of our other employees, this fund is now going to only require, the police and fire funds will only require to be footnoted in our audit. Again, very similar to the IMRF. The dollars in the police and fire funds are not held by the city. It is a state-run retirement system, just like IMRF. So, again, we'll be footnoting it, but we no longer have to budget for it and it is a reduction of over thirteen million dollars in budget expenditures that we had adopted as of January one. I would like to point out as we move through, as you are also very, very aware, we still have to budget for our contribution, employer contribution to the police and fire funds for our annual contribution. And for two thousand and twenty-four, that amount is going to be going up about one point two million dollars and we'll be discussing that more during the budget. So, now just to highlight the revenues and expenditures, the total August amended revenues total a hundred and forty-four million, five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars, which is an increase of a little over eight point one million dollars or five point seven percent. These revenue changes, they are an increase from where the state had thought the revenues were going to fall. They're an increase from what the Illinois Municipal League had projected. And as you know, following COVID, it's just, it was very hard to anticipate where the economy was going to be. The good news is, is the revenues are up and not down. So, our economy here in Moline is faring very, very well. To go through some of those highlights, our property taxes as we adopted have no change. The TIF taxes show a decrease of about ninety-six thousand dollars and it is just the final result of certified taxes from the county. Other city taxes are up about nine hundred and eighty-five thousand, based on our year-to-date actual, with primary increases in the hotel motel tax of a hundred and fifty, which is great for all of our local hotels. Our prepared food and beverage and liquor tax is up three hundred and fifty thousand, very good for the economy with all of our local restaurants and, and bars. Home rule sales tax of four hundred and forty-nine thousand and about thirty-six thousand of various. With licenses and permits, again, this is building permits, plumbing permits, electrical permits, up about seventy-six thousand. Our use of money has almost doubled. As you know, interest rates now, if you invest your own money, you've seen an increase. It's up one point five million dollars and this has helped every one of our sixty-three individual funds across the city. So, as we go through the fund balances in more detail during the budget, you'll see that we have, that's, that's added to the nice healthy fund balances. Our intergovernmental revenue is up over thirteen percent and the largest chunk of that is staff and the council being very aggressive at going after federal and state grant revenue. Part of that is also ARPA. But we're very fortunate, four point one million dollars of additional federal and state grant money from where we had thought we were going to be in December. On top of that, we, we anticipate to receive eight hundred thousand dollars in additional income tax and about five hundred thousand dollars in replacement tax, which is corporate income tax. Our charges for services are down about eight hundred thousand, largely due to the closing of the Riverside Pool. At the time when we adopted the budget, we weren't sure on the timing of when that construction was going to be taking place. Other reductions in charges for services, our ambulance fees down about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. COVID was an all-time high for our ambulance services and they've just kind of leveled off the last couple of years. It's kind of sat at that same rate. And then we've got transfers in, I'm going to skip miscellaneous, transfers in are up about one point two million dollars and it is largely the result of a change in accounting. We are now properly accounting for vehicle replacements in our enterprise funds instead of the fleet fund. So, there was money that we had accumulated in the fleet fund, we're transferring it back to the enterprise fund and then going forward, they will pay for all of their vehicles just like they pay for all of their capital. But that is the major changes in our expenditures. I mean, the revenue side. On the expenditure side, total expenditures total a hundred and fifty-seven million, three sixty-seven, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, up a little over eleven million dollars or seven point seven percent. And the first thing you see that and you say, wow, what in the world has happened? The vast majority of that is CIP dollars that are being carried forward from twenty-two. It was money that we had budgeted but had not completed the project. Now, we have to allocate additional spending authority this year. If you net out the capital project money, the net difference is up about three point nine percent. And so, I will go through those changes. You'll see the CIP up about the five million dollars we talked about. We have about one point four or five million dollars for filling vacant positions. As you know, we tend to decrease the budget because of anticipated vacancies. Now, we're adding it back in based on the actuals that we have seen throughout the year. In addition to the vacancies, we have had about two hundred and fifteen thousand payouts for employee retirements and six hundred and eighteen thousand in additional overtime, largely in police and fire. But again, that was offset, some of that was offset because of vacancies, but we do, we are seeing the net increase of about six hundred thousand in, in overtime. We are granting spending authority for one point two million dollars of additional ARPA expenditures and we project by the end of December that we will have spent about sixty-five percent of our twenty million dollar allocation. So, we are right on target to get everything spent through twenty twenty-six. Another chunk of expenditures is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our general trust, largely due to authorizing grant expenditures for the police chief. And we've got five hundred thousand for the I seventy-four master plan consultant, four hundred thousand dollars in outside legal fees are projected. And earlier this year, the council had adopted three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the mini pumper for the fire department, which I believe we're close to receiving or maybe have received. Sixty-two thousand dollars for a clock monument in the downtown and four hundred and sixty-one thousand of various expenditures, which sounds like a big miscellaneous bucket, but it's really only point three percent of the remaining budget or point oh oh three. So, it's very small, little ups and downs throughout all of our sixty-three funds. And again, we have transfers out to offset the transfers in. The summary of all these changes that you'll see on the resolution at the next council meeting is on page thirty-two of your PDF. But first of all, I want to just highlight just a couple of things. If you want to go to the general fund on page sixteen, I always like to point out what is the impact to our general fund. And as you recall, we currently have a policy of trying to maintain fund balances, expenditures to fund balance of twenty to twenty-five percent. And we anticipate by December thirty-first, it will be at twenty-nine point three two percent. If we were to bring that down to twenty-five percent, that's about a two point one million dollar excess. If you recall, when we talked about this in June, we had reported that we had one point seven million carried over from twenty-two. That is that money, as well as we are pushing off some of the Evergreen Comp and Class Study because we're going to be phasing that in over a couple years, at least out till twenty twenty-four. Only the non-union so far has been adopted as of December first for that. So, we're in good shape with the general fund. I should point out, we are still in the preliminary stages for adopting the twenty-four through twenty-six budgets or preparing them. Right now, what we're seeing is, even though we're high now, we're probably going to be in that twenty to twenty-five percent range by the end of the three years, which is exactly where we had thought we were going to be last year when we adopted the budget. So, we had planned some drawdowns. So, we're still following that plan and everything is working. And then just to give you some very high, high highlights, if you turn to page twenty-seven, you will see cash flows and I'm not going to go through all of these. But across the board, all of the enterprise funds and all of the internal service funds truly are right on target where we had hoped them to be. The balances are actually up slightly because of interest earnings, as well as every, every single one of these funds came under budget in twenty-two, so there were some excess reserves. And I will, I have lots and lots of notes I was planning to go through, but we'll go through them during the budget so that you feel comfortable and then we'll talk about it in regards to the five-year, kind of a five-year plan. And we've also put in for your view on page thirty-three, the CIP. And as you recall, we adopted it in July. We have a couple of minor changes. You'll see them in a green highlight for twenty-three. It's basically projects that have already come before you with change orders or by resolution or with bids that have changed ever so slight. But I do want to make mention of two larger projects I do want to point out. And those two are traffic signals. They're two-thirds of the way down your page under the miscellaneous category, if you see them there, if you're on page thirty-three of the PowerPoint. And what has happened there is we have traffic signals for Thirty-Sixth Avenue and Sixteenth Street, as well as Thirty-second Avenue and Forty-first Street. And engineering has received bids and between those two projects, they are coming in four hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we had planned on. So, we have moved them into the twenty-four budget. We are massaging this as we go through everything that we'll be presenting in October, but we believe we do have spending authority to be able to move forward with those. So, what we're asking for tonight is to move those two major projects, as well as these other small changes, into twenty-four. But engineering would like authority to just go ahead and order the signals. It will not be paid for or go through the budget until twenty twenty-four. But it's going to take about six months to get the signals, is what David was telling me.
Okay. Is that your report?
If I have it.
Yeah, go ahead.
About three or four more minutes. If you turn to page thirty-five. Again, we will go through this in detail. It's the summary of the ARPA. I just want you to be thinking about this as we go to the budget. You'll see emboldened red highlight, these are the changes from the last time you saw them in June and we are going to be asking council for consideration of spending what was previously the one-stop-shop money to kind of divvy it up on some projects. So, we're for sure to get it spent by twenty-six. These are placeholders. This money, you know, has not been authorized by you, that's why it is highlighted. We did have authorization for the hundred and nine thousand dollars, if you see that one, for the software for the one-stop-shop. That has been authorized. But the next three categories, two of these are coming before you on September the twelfth for your consideration and it is a pilot program for the leaf, for a leaf vacuum truck and an asphalt paver and a tack oil system to be doing in-house resurfacing. It's, both of these are one-time equipment purchases. And then the last one is, there's been discussion about needing to enhance our building security at City Hall and Public Works, so there's additional two forty-five. Again, we've got to have a talk about this and then you need to give direction whether or not you want to authorize that. If you turn that page, again, just some things to think through, we still have the broadband money that isn't in the restrictive category that is unallocated. It was earmarked for broadband. The easy way to move forward with this, as you know, are the water and street, our water and WPC projects, so that is something to consider. Also to consider is moving forward with the childcare program. Originally, we had authorized five hundred thousand. To date, we've spent over, I don't have the number here, it looks like about three hundred and fifteen thousand with a hundred and eighty-five thousand potentially that could be available to be allocated either for future childcare or for some other program. So, I'm just throwing that out. Then we move right into our TIPS on page thirty-seven. And just so you're aware, we do have some project money. It's on page thirty-seven, the first column, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars across some TIPS projects that need to be spent by the end of the year and department heads are on that. And if you turn the page, you'll see highlighted, this is our projected cash advances to other funds. With the two big ones, TIP seven, we anticipate by the end of that TIP, there could be a liability of nine point one million dollars right now, as is in the current situation, and our TIP eleven to have a liability of three point eight million dollars. Then we've got all the detail for all the TIPS. And on the PDF page number fifty-one, you'll see the Parks Department. Again, these are all funds we're going to go through in detail. They're right on target with a projected ending fund balance of twenty-two point four seven percent. On the next page is the library. They've had a couple of years that have been very good where they've come under budget. They've had a little better revenue. They have also had a lot of open positions, which has helped accumulate some fund balance and they're hoping to use those funds towards that garden project that Brian showed you the other day. The very last page I'm going to talk about is our cannabis fund. As you know, the dispensary on Twenty-third Avenue opened in July. We anticipate that our first payment will be received by October the fifteenth. We have about a ninety-day accrual. That's very similar to other state revenues. We will, however, from an accounting standpoint, be able to accrue six months of revenue. And right now, we're hoping to get about fifty thousand dollars a month. We do not know for sure whether or not the other two will be open or if they will be generating revenue by the end of the year. or if they will be generating revenue by the end of the year. So that's just an FYI. And then for council's consideration, we are earmarking, we have talked to Bob and with Brian and the library board, consideration from the council of granting 55,000 dollars as a one-time contribution to the garden art project as part of these. And we can talk about them more in October, but it is part of these amendments. And the bottom line, and I just say it again, we are very, very fortunate. We are in excellent financial position. And it is so helpful to be in this place right now as we're moving into budget talks. And one final thing that I want to do is very, very briefly talk about the calendar that's at your places. I'm not going to go through every line, I promise. But just in general, as we move towards the budget in October, I just want you to be thinking about this. We, as administration with Bob and all the department heads, we are planning, our hopes is to present to the council a balanced operating budget across all funds. And where we really need your help, number one, we're going to go through all of it with you so you are comfortable. But where we really need your help is on the big projects, the strategic plan, the potential unfunded projects, and to help find revenue sources to fund those. So as we head through September, I'm going to highlight some things to be thinking about. The very first page is primarily all of September. We have a very aggressive September calendar. On September the 12th, we have six informationals that are all budget-related. One of them being with David Silverman on the SSAs. But all the rest of them are big project-related. We are wanting you to understand the magnitude or just, you know, the significance of the projects, the dollars associated with it, and potential funding sources if there are any. And some of them don't have funding sources, so we need to find them. We are also, on September the 12th, going to be bringing back Chapter 8, amending the rental housing licensing program that came before you. So big decisions on that, a lot of work to be done. On the roundtable that is set for September 19th, Tony and Barry will be bringing back all of the enterprise funds, where we're going to talk about those in detail, all the cash flows that are in the amendments. But then on the five-year scale, we're going to go through all the fee increases that we talked about last year, for those of you that were on the council at that time. That plan is working. We have tentatively gone through it with Tony several times already. We're kind of tweaking the salaries based on the Evergreen study. But those fee increases that we thought we were going to need, we will be needing to have. But we're following the plan. So there's not any big surprises in what we showed you last year. In addition, and this is the big one to put a big red star on, at that roundtable, we are also going to add the fee, review of the fee structure for unfunded projects. So we want to look at the projects. Our hope is to take the list that we provided you in June, spread them out over a three-to-five-year period with potential revenue streams for your consideration. And then based on what your recommendations are, we will hope to build those into the budget. And then on the next page is just, that's where the real budget starts in October. But that gets us pretty much through September.
So, so when you're talking about those revenue streams, that's harkening back to the portion of the special meeting you and I shared when we talked about all the competing needs for the one pot of dollars.
Correct.
So just for the public's sake and also our own, reminding ourselves, it's wonderful that you and your team have done such good, and, you know, the administrators have done such a good job keeping the ship afloat and being in a good place. But we have a lot of pressures coming.
Yes, yes, we do.
Thank you. Other questions from the council, Mr. Schmidt?
First, I just want to say I appreciate us continuing to operate our fund balances as we are. I think there's a real cause to review our policies, whether it even makes sense because we know we're heading into some of those leaner years as it's coming up in the next two or three. And so we've been able to float those funds a little higher last year and this year when we had a huge influx of cash so that we can then spend those down in the next two years and not dip so far into our reserves as to cause a problem or have to look at increasing taxes to cover on that. So, I mean, I've been wondering for a while if that fund balance policy makes sense at the numbers. It's at, because I think if we did follow that, it would have put us in a lot of danger of having to not be able to big far head, right? We have a lot of these big projects. One of the best ways we have to pay for them is to save for them, and that's what we've been doing. So that's one way to turn.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd just like to, just to comment to the rest of the council members. I would like to see more money, and I don't know if David Dreyer is here, but if we can do the engineering and get more street work done, I think we can all have that discussion come budget time. Because we've got some really bad, bad streets that need attention. If we can, I mean, the argument's been that we can't get it done, the engineering done. We can only do so much in one year. But if there's a way we can get more done, I, I know that you would all be pretty much in favor of getting more street work done, budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Schmidt?
I have a few questions that are going to relate back to the cannabis funds. So Carol, right now that you said we're expecting about 50,000 a month, which would be like 200, 250 for this year. And I know we're in the estimate zone while we wait for the first to come back. But that's currently listed at 500,000 in the budget. So just ask you to walk through that first.
And we probably should have fine-tuned that down to the 300,000. If we do 50,000 for six months, it's in the 300,000 range. We actually anticipate, and I need to find my notes. Mylan currently brings in 1.7 million, and I think that's about 142 million. We don't know what that overall impact is going to be till we get that first monthly or even the first couple of months of proceeds. But we're trying to be conservative when I say 50,000. We had budgeted more than that.
Yeah, and I know we thought they'd be open, I mean, those things are right where we thought, but.
Yes.
My, my question, really my concern is why is that statute coming up there? Like, and I don't know if this is something that's coming to an immediate need or a time, like, I know we had just seen it, and I think I'm supportive of trying to move through with what that process is. But we had pretty definitively stated that that money would be used to support the MOLive event. And then following that would only be available for equity programs. That's the direction this council gave, and I'm not interested in deviating from that. And of course, that's subject to a vote of the council, but.
And I might let Mr. Vitas address that. And I know Brian is also on the remote. But I know that the library board was just looking for consideration of a one-time contribution for additional funding.
I believe the library project, as Brian reported, it was somewhere in a neighborhood of 1.5 million. And most of it was going to be done with fundraising efforts for the most part, but not entirely. So, you know, when we had the cannabis discussions, it was kind of all over the boards, to be frank, last year. I mean, we, we did very specifically, I mean, we looked at it like a gift. And then we started to figure out where this gift was going to go. Everybody's got ideas about where it's going to go, but there's been no final determination on where the full balance will go. So 150,000 of it went very specifically to MOLive. So it's going to fund the free festival for the citizens of Moline and the Quad citizens of Moline. And that was specifically called out by council. And then there was a list. Yeah, and then these earmarks were, were out there. So, and it's up to council ultimately to decide what will be done with those dollars when we have the budget discussions. But in earnest, there's a lot, like, like the budget pressures we're feeling, there's going to be pressures to spend that money on whether it's equity issues or other programs. That's going to rest with council, and we really don't know what that number's going to be. They opened later than they had planned, much, much later than he had planned. So we were smart to budget conservatively. And even what we budgeted, we don't plan it. If it doesn't come in, we're not spending it. That's really my rule of thumb.
To be continued in the budget discussion.
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Schmidt. I, I feel like the library program is an equity program because it's a program that the park is something for all of the residents of Moline. It's something that people can go to for free and not have to spend their money. I feel like it's something for everyone, and it does kind of seem like an equity program to me, so.
Thank you. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. To further clarify, I remember when we were first discussing how to allocate some of these funds, I made it a point to say that when cannabis was illegal in the state of Illinois, black and brown communities bore the brunt of the criminalization. So we should focus on having some sort of aspect that addresses the, I guess, the harm that was done to black and brown communities that were incarcerated and families that were broken up. So that's where kind of the equity aspect first came into play. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
All to be continued in further discussions. We've got to keep a focus on what the item is in front of us. You have a further comment?
Yes, and it's related. No, of course, we're not going through with the motion. I don't have a problem with putting, with finding a place where to bring that funding from. I'm not interested in this time in doing it from that fund. And that may be something we have to put, vote or decide how that goes. But I just want to make it clear that I don't think, that, I, I think that belongs somewhere else. And one on the equity piece and the other on, we're waiting to see what those revenues even are.
Thank you. I do have a note, and I see on your calendar that you would like a motion to amend the 2023 budget as presented. However, our practice is that we do not take votes in informationals, and we don't do it in miscellaneous. What would you advise legal counsel? Is this a suspend rules moment? Do we do it during non-consent? Do you have to have it done at this meeting for compliance issues? It can wait till September 12th?
We will be bringing back the final resolution on September 12th. We were just kind of wanting to nod if there were any changes to include in that resolution. And we can certainly put this 55,000 in the consideration for October.
Okay, that makes, thank you for the clarification. That sounds like the only issue that's really been raised, as, as well as the primary focus on infrastructure and our roads. We talked at our strategic planning about that being absolutely number one, housing coming in second.
Yes.
So I think Mr. O'Brien's point is taken well by this council who's spoken during strategic planning on that front. Thank you so much. So we, if there's nothing else, we will move to 7.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 22 offenses, miscellaneous, Article 1, Division 1, Section 22-1105, tobacco products, tobacco accessories, smoking herbs and alternative nicotine products of the city of Moline Code of Ordinances regarding tobacco dealers licenses. Phew, Mrs. Soplas?
Thank you, that was.
Take that away.
Thanks, Joe.
So here we have for your consideration, ordinance amendment to the licensing of tobacco. As you know, in the past year or so, there have been changes to liquor licenses where we have capped the number of licenses available overall. And we have put restrictions on those licenses so that if a business wishes to apply for a license and exceed that cap, that the council would vote on that. Similarly, we are looking to do the same with tobacco license. And of course, this is done to not only control the number of tobacco licenses in the city, but to encourage a diverse business, you know, businesses in the city. We don't want, you know, just tobacco, liquor, tobacco, liquor. So it's to promote other businesses. So our amendments include a cap consistent with the current number of tobacco licenses, which is 48. It also includes that if a license lapses or is revoked, that the number of available licenses is reduced. This is very similar to liquor licenses. Thirdly, the licenses are specific to the business location. So a, a business or a licensee cannot take their tobacco license from one location and then move to another location. And then finally, the tobacco license is non-transferable. So you cannot sell it when you sell your business. It's personal to the licensee. So we offer that for your consideration tonight. We're, you know, here to answer questions on that. Otherwise, I believe that it will, by consensus, thumbs up. We'll move it to the agenda for screening in next meeting.
I see some thumbs up, I see a hand, yeah.
Yeah, thumbs up. I just had one question. In your memo, I did discuss varying licenses in at least one place. Was that just differentiating by type of business or type of product sold? I'm guessing we don't recommend implementing something similar here, but I was curious.
Yeah, that's the classic B-Bit.
Right, so that was probably better left out of the memo because all it did was create confusion. That was simply an example from another community. And the, the Class A, let me see if I can get to that. They do represent different types of licenses.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank council primarily because this is something we've asked for. And it, I've heard a lot of people say, oh, another vape shop, another smoke shop. This is just putting the control back to the city's hands about how many of these we're going to have, and they can't proliferate. So I just, I think it's a really great move forward, and I appreciate it very much.
I do appreciate council's support on this as the person who has to sign all these licenses, except I have not seen the tobacco ones because that was not the process. And I, I think we've seen some good things come from the caps we've put on. The previous council's putting a cap on the salons, the gaming salons, et cetera. This is sort of in line with making sure we can diversify our businesses, our small businesses in the city and not just have proliferation. So I appreciate that. Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
I was going to say, the last, the, the new place that we just approved on Avenue of the Cities, they have tobacco licenses, right?
Right, and my goal as the person who had to wade through all of that as liquor commissioner was to try to make that the last one.
So that's solely your prerogative, right?
Actually, that's been in zoning and planning, the tobacco licenses. Now it will be the prerogative of this body, which I think it should be, so.
But we already do have, on Fourth Avenue, we have alcohol and tobacco. I can only buy so much, you know? So.
Yeah, thank you for your support, and we'll bring that back. So at this point, I, and knowing that we do have a, still have the agenda, could we take a five-minute recess before I call the council to order? So at, at 7:35, do I need a motion to do that? I need a mo. Ms. Macias and Finch, all in favor for a five-minute recess? Thank you, we'll be back at 7:35. Do we have last room time?
Yes.
And is there an invocation, Mr. Macias?
No, Your Honor.
Roll call, please. Alder Person Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes of August 8, 2023, council meeting minutes of August 15, 2023, appointments made at Committee of the Whole on August 22, 2023, and consent agenda items 13.1 through 13.3 includes the. And consent agenda items 13.1 through 13.3 exclusively. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Finch, seconded by Alderperson Murphy. Roll call, please. Alderperson Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item 15.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an independent contractor agreement for professional services with MKSK and Illinois Corporation, DBA MKSK, to develop the Moline Riverfront Master Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian?
Just want to express thanks again. This is a, a great opportunity for the city and the Fourth Ward. And thank you for partnering with Renew Moline and all the great things we're doing together.
Thank you.
We're being very generous with Fourth Ward.
All right. Yes, Mr.?
I would be remiss if I don't comment on this because I've been working on this with Alex now for the better part of over two years. And she's probably been working toward this goal longer than that by at least three more years. So, you know, with the, with the acquisition of the Kone property back in December of the last year, that really, it really put things into high gear. And, and I want to, I want to thank, even though he's not here, Ryan Bitlock, for the work that he did on the front end of this with Alex. I want to thank Alex again, her board chairman, Mr. Derek, Eric Griffiths, Jennifer Pizzari, Greg Derrick, rather. I said, mister, sorry. And then, and then Tony Loi, all who worked tirelessly to review the wealth of applications and the, and the national interest that this project grew. We have to realize, I mean, we're in the middle of the country, and, you know, we're in this area of about 400,000 people roughly. And yet, we drew national interest from coast to coast, from north to south. And it just goes to show how important being on that river is and how important projects like this are that are legacy projects and multi-generational. So, we're, next month launching into what's going to become an 11-month process that will create, you know, a long-term future on the, on the river in the downtown, not only benefit Molineers, but all Quad citizens, as well as every visitor who comes to the Quad city. So, it's our front door, and it's, as Alex calls it, the gateway to the east as opposed to the west. So, anyhow, thank you all for your assistance. Looking forward to both her and the newly appointed CED director, Mr. Mathias, to lead this and usher this project through to a successful completion next July.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, roll call, please. Alderperson Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number 15.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline, the City of Rock Island, and the County of Rock Island, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding available from the U.S. Department of Justice, 2023 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Program, JAG, and authorizing police department staff to do all things necessary to submit the subsequent grant application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Anything you want to add, Chief? Okay.
Annual.
Annual. Yes. Okay. If there's anything further, roll call, please. Alderperson Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number 15.3, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an intergovernmental grant agreement between the State of Illinois, Department of Human Services, and the City of Moline, setting the terms for acceptance of a grant award to the police department for the amount of $9,683. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please. Alderperson Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number 15.4, a resolution approving and adopting the decision of the corporate authorities of the City of Moline on the application for local siding approval for Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC Waste Transfer Station.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Discussion? It's Finch.
Um, I would just like to say that I feel that the nine criteria has been met. The application has met the burden of proof for the following reasons. The local regional capacity needs it, supports economic development, promotes competition for solid waste services, meets floodplain requirements. East Moline supports transfer station with letter to Rickema stating need for additional solid waste handling capacity in Rock Island County with the service area. Generated, generates new revenue for the City of Moline. Thirty-one new jobs, sufficiently distant from residential zone sites, compatible with airport operations. LRS will be responsible for its share of road repairs and maintenance, and the facility will not contain hazardous waste.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I think that there have been a lot of concerns and fears that have been presented by residents who live nearby, many of whom are not Moline residents, but who are our neighbors, and that is something we have to listen to. And I hear those concerns, but I remain in support because I believe that all these conditions have been met, and the item will need to move forward. As we've gone through this process, we, as a body, as well as the city staff, have done a lot of work to push and make sure that all of these items are set up to be done in a way that is going to be functional, that is going to protect us from all of the fears being presented. I understand that there's a lot of people who are not going to agree with me. I know that in this room. But having gone through that process, having listened to this, having once lived in an apartment on the edge of an industrial park with a transfer station in it, I don't share those concerns. I don't believe Mr. Leicher would bring this to us if there was any hazard to the airport. I, I think that all I can do is say that if any residents feel that, and of Moline or outside, that, that LRS is not living up to any of those commitments that are made, I would ask you to come to me, bring it to my attention, and I will be happy to, to work with our city staff to make sure that we are addressing those items. I know that's not what you want to hear from me, but that is where I stand.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Castro?
Um, I just wanted, I agree with Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Finch. I just, I think there's been some misinformation that's been going around. I think that people have said that we're being very secretive and not being open. But we've had several days of public comment. Things have been available on our website since the very beginning, and I feel like this has been a very open, transparent process. I did struggle going back and forth a little bit. I think since this is, you know, I'm a new alderperson, I did have to take, had to take a deeper dive into everything. I attended all hearings. I read the transcripts. I read all of the information that was sent from citizens. But at the end, I did agree that the, all nine of the criteria were, were met, and will be voting in favor.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the number of people who've shown up tonight with very strong opinions. I, I appreciate engagement regardless of the side we're on. I think that informed, engaged public helps round out the edges of the government itself, and that's really a good thing. The, our job here tonight, and I'm happy to speak to you all, this is the first time we've been able to talk about it. Our job here tonight is to determine if the applicant met the nine requirements required by the state. And, you know, I attended the, the public hearings, as did all of you, or you read the transcripts. I was never compelled to believe that they did not meet those requirements. And that was by the expert testimony of both the applicant and those opposed to it. There were public comment sessions available there as well. And, and nothing strictly compelled me. In fact, on page nine of the hearing officer's full report, it references a letter from East Moline to Rickema, which actually compelled me to believe that the capacity is not adequate. So, there were a lot of, I, I would say, supporting documents and evidence to support all of the criteria that were applicable to this project. In the eight months that we've been discussing this in public meetings, on the newspaper, the news itself, WQAD has reported on this, I've received one email from a constituent opposed to this, and that was today at around 2:30. I am flabbergasted as to why the outreach didn't happen sooner. And, and I, I encourage the public, if they're opposed to something, to speak up quickly. There was ample opportunity to convince or at least have that dialogue. And the fact that it only came in at the 11th hour leads me to believe that it wasn't as big of a concern as we're led to believe. The anonymous postcards came out. I did not receive it. I don't know if anyone here did either. That is also telling. And, and I have seen them, and they were not factually accurate. So, based on the facts, based on the evidence presented by both the applicant and those opposed to it, I'm compelled to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Mr. Rozak?
My position is close to Mr. Timian because, like him, today around 2:00 PM, I got an email. It was in 11th hour, so I presume that the person who sent me an email, in fact, he was not interested to talk about it, otherwise he could have sent me an email a week ago. So, I will, and since the applicant met all the nine criteria of the state, I would be in favor of it.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. O'Brien?
The City of Moline and the county are working towards more efficient ways of disposing of refuse. If, if the landfill has more years added on to it because of this, that's a good thing. But ultimately, we're looking at ways to reduce the number of trash, the amount of trash that we generate in the first place by eliminating plastics and other things. So, I guess the long term, we need to follow, like Dearing Company and Arconic have basically, they've cut, cut their waste in half, or pretty close to it, over the last 20 or 30 years. That's the goal. And I think having a more efficient way to dispose of garbage and recyclables is the way to go. I will be voting in support of this. And I had my, you know, there are some times during the hearings that I have my doubts too, like you do. But I have to listen to the experts. And I know in my, I mean, my decision has been that it will be good for not only City of Moline, it'll be good for the county and the area.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Macias?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. If I just may kind of paint a picture of the process. This was actually very much like a court proceeding where we, as the council, acted as jurors. And we were here for the two public hearings where there was experts, mainly on one side. There was people objection, with objections, but it was very fair. There was a lot of facts presented. We learned, I learned way more about these, the logistics of garbage and, and basically these state-of-the-art facilities that I would, that I could ever imagine. And ultimately, when it was all said and done, it was a very solid case. So, just focusing on the facts, I understand and I hear you. But focusing on the facts, it really, that, that's all I, I could do, and I will be in favor of it because it, it is something that, you know, the, the case was made. And in addition to, it's something that our city and the residents throughout the Quad cities will benefit from because there will be more competition. So, again, I'll be in supportive, supportive of this for, for those reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Yes, I have been involved in the public hearings. I've been on the fence. I've, I've listened. I went out and researched different things on the internet or whatever. But when it boils down to the nine criteria, that what was presented, I have to go with, with, in favor of this. I think that, I don't, don't think that I don't hear you, and I'm not concerned about your concerns. But I hope in the future, if there is an issue where they don't live up to what they're saying they're going to do, and it impacts you, come back to us. Let us work with you and resolve it.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, second.
I think a lot of conversation has been had too related to the Rickema objection as it was put forward, and, and the letter from East Moline. And I just, one thing that severely swayed me has a lot to do with the fact that all of these objections, none were willing to put forward the effort to step up and become a part of that hearing process. They just tried to go around. They just tried to stand and say, hey, we're going to get in the way of this. East Moline with its own letter, as was alluded to. The letter says, you don't need to cite this because you can cite more landfill capacity for us. Their argument wasn't, we don't need it. Their argument was, I don't want you to have it. I want us to have it. And Rickema is committed to a laissez-faire system, allowing a free market competition. And that is what we are allowing and what we are moving through. And then our responsibility is to act as the safeguards to that. You know, I, I think that that is not the position that, that Rickema has followed. It's not the first time I've been disappointed by their actions, as when they took away the recycling centers over the objections of Moline. And this is, well, one positive piece of that is we are taking steps to try and repair that damage as well. I think that as we look to what that, that means regionally and competition-wise, this is, you know, we're not automatically going to switch to Moline trash being processed through a certain place or any contracts like that. But this will allow a business to come that will contribute to competition in our marketplace and will support lowering rates for residents. You know, if, if that's what we believe markets do, and we must to live in our society and run it that way, then we have to allow that to function.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Timian, your second.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I neglected to mention the environmental study that the gentleman mentioned. And, and I agree that if this fails, the environmental study, if we pass this tonight, and the environmental study fails, we win. Because we're not getting a bad system polluting the environment. If the environmental study passes, we should be happy that an environmentally safe facility is being put into our community. So, either way, passing this goes to the next step, and we get to go through the environmentals, which I think is a great process.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments this evening. I appreciate the comments, especially from the public. As was mentioned, engagement is essential for a good, working democracy. I think that also extends to the partners that we have. And I would say, from the very beginning, and this was reported in the news when we first started this process, I believed in this project because it would limit monopolies, which impacts rates for customers, right? It decreases costs for all of us. It allows more competition, as we say. And of course, we're promoting development in a place that has not seen development since the TIF was created. And if you want responsible elected officials, it is our job to be responsible in multiple ways. And this is one way that we show that. The other way we show that is by recognizing that we're not the final judge and jury on this project. This goes to the, the state, and they, they hold the future of the project in their hands. We are simply, it sounds like from the council, your votes will be to approve moving this forward. And should the I E P A agree with this? I want to take this opportunity to remind my regional colleagues who I sit with on by-state, on the by-state commission, who I work with in intergovernmental meetings, that I hope that they will respect our choices, just as we respect their choices. Every single time a new development opportunity or new program or resource comes to their communities, even if it is, becomes a competitive situation for us. I think that that is something that we should expect. And I agree with you, Mr. Schmidt. And I agree with you, Mr. Schmidt, I think the previous council members and the continuing council members were all disappointed that Moline was the only one that wanted to maintain recycling for Rock Island County, and Rickema voted against that. There was, from what we've read, little, little discussion at Rickema, there was acquiescence to one single community, and they didn't follow their own laissez-faire policy. So I really encourage my regional colleagues to, to continue to function in a way that's good for all of us, and I'll leave it at that. If there's no other comments, roll call, please.
Alder Person Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
The ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Item number 15.5, a resolution authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and city staff to apply to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, IDNR, for an open space land acquisition and development grant, OSLAN, for the amount of $600,000 to turf the infills at the Green Valley Softball Complex, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, and staff to do all things necessary to prepare and submit said grant application.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Castro, discussion? Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I have some, I, I'm glad that we're doing the grant. I think we never want to leave money on the table if it's available. The overall project, I still have mixed feelings about. I would ask, before we move forward with the project, that Mr. Griffin can provide a more detailed accounting. Last week, we talked about some added costs that are baked in with replacement of the turf, prorated over the 10 years, and other costs and expenses, just to get a better idea about how these, the overall accounting of this is going to work.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Timian, we're not to have side conversations during the meeting, I understand if you have a question, but that's actually in ordinance.
That is all.
Do we have a...
I have the ability to speak to counsel.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
No, that's fine, but we'll pause so that we can all pay attention to who's got the word. Okay, Mr. Timian, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
No, I'm just asking that when the actual proposal comes, it has a full accounting, including prorated costs of replacement over 10 years, just to get a better idea of the profit-loss, and, and including maybe a more detailed version of the cost savings through seasonals and, and other things. More than just a total, I'd like kind of a line-by-line.
Okay. I also wanted to propose, obviously one of you would, oh, I'm sorry, I'll see your hand, but I'll get to you shortly. You know, we was, made mention last week of the queue, right? Who, what projects are in the queue, and that those projects had been publicly vetted through surveys, et cetera, meetings, and I would like to suggest that you all make an amendment to this that requires them to do some form of public vetting before this goes through the budgeting process if they are awarded the, the grant. That's an idea, yes.
Actually, it's, it's kind of following what you said too. Right after, right before I had, Mr. Griffin had presented, last week I had received calls from members of the community that were concerned about the items down at Riverside not being completed, and those are things that we had talked about. So I do hope that we take into consideration the other projects as well before going forward with something like this. And then secondly, I hope that Mr. Griffin could also provide a better breakdown of the income that we can expect. I know the numbers he had given us were regional numbers, not specific to the city of Moline, so I'd like to see a better breakdown of what that could look like.
Okay. All right, is that all? Okay. Hearing, nothing further, roll call, please. Alder Person Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
The ayes, no nays, and that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number 16.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35, Altered Speed Limits by Reducing the Speed Limit Along 34th Street Between Fifth Avenue and 12th Avenue to 35 Miles per Hour.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Finch. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Alder Person Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
The ayes, no nays, and motion to advance the second reading carries. Item number 16.2, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 4, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances, to be more business-friendly and to streamline the liquor licensing process.
Motion to advance the second reading.
Second.
All right, motion by Finch, seconded by Castro, discussion? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Alder Person Macias?
Aye.
Rozak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
The ayes, no nays, and motion to advance the second reading carries. And that was all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm sure there's plenty of announcements, but as we were all preparing for a pretty hefty meeting, I don't have a lot in front of me. I do appreciate everyone who was able to come to the combined human rights and neighborhood groups picnic, Human Rights Commission, excuse me, picnic for volunteers on Saturday, was pretty well-attended, got to reconnect with a lot of people, so that's always a good thing, especially as we're just talking about engagement with the public, et cetera. Speaking of engagement, we got a really lovely report from Mr. Brecht about the REPT video pilot project we were working on, so there'll be more information coming on that, I believe, from y'all.
Shortly, it's good news.
But it was really, really well utilized, we're outperforming other places, so in terms of transparency and connection and, you know, what's healthy for democracy, I think that that was a great opportunity, and we'll see where that goes in the future. Updates, I'm trying to think, updates from ByState, there's a lot of transportation, you know, sort of, policy updates, projects getting amended, things like that across the county. We are still, our, like, project from some of their funds is the Morgan Park Walkway, things like that. I, I've stayed in pretty good touch with Mr. Dreyer about grant opportunities and those things, so there's another round of, is it SDGB?
What's that?
SDGB grants, it's more state funding for transportation projects that will be coming. And that's all I have at the moment. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was at Mercado last Friday, and there was a lot of people, and it dawned on me, we have our big trucks there, and we're actively recruiting for certain positions, could we not get a banner or a big magnet sticker saying we're hiring, get a lot of eyeballs on it? Just a thought, you know, if we're going to have our truck there, might as well get a little bit, I guess it's just me thinking with my marketing hat. Good opportunity, and also targeting a very specific community as well, so, just a random idea, I'd like to share. Thank, and that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Rozak?
I would like to inform everybody, in September I will not be here. I will be visiting my native country from September 2nd to September 30th.
Can you also say how residents can get in touch with you, because you, you will be reachable?
Oh, yeah, residents can in touch with me using my city email, I will have access to city email.
And there's always, they can refer to Mr. Schmidt, Alder Person at large. Okay. Wish you luck with your brother. Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. A number of us were at the ribbon cutting for the daycare in...
Esperanza Center.
Esperanza Center, thank you. It's, it, this was a, another victory from the program that many members in this council voted on, to use ARBA monies to help create more spaces for early childhood development. Having been a single father who's been looking for daycare, it is crucial for families, it is 100% crucial. I wouldn't have survived without quality daycare in my neighborhood, so the fact that we are providing this for more people is just another thing that I'm very proud of. I would also like to thank the scouting troop, who is no longer here. I was once a scout who came to the city of Moline to watch a meeting for a merit badge, and it's just really fun to see it go full circle. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nothing, Your Honor. Mr. O'Brien?
I would, I regretfully was not at that ribbon cutting, and I doubly should have been because I'm on project now, board now, too, so, but I was running my own daycare with grandkids, so I could not, but everything's back tomorrow now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Castro?
Nothing, Your Honor. Mr. Schmidt?
First, I apologize for an earlier interruption, and I just apologize to counsel for interrupting. The other, I just wanted to add, as Mr. Timian also spoke about the scouts who were here this evening, I did have a chance to speak with them as they were heading on down the stairs, and they were all very excited to be leaving, I think. But at least some expressed that, yes, they got to enjoy, we had to see a very lively meeting this evening, which was an absolute difference, so glad to have them in attendance. Thank you.
They should have all earned their government badge, having been a former scout, based on tonight's meeting, because this was...
Citizenship in the community.
Clearly, clearly, a good example of democracy in action. Mo Live.
Oh, yeah, thank you for providing everyone.
Let's not forget the, the Mo Live event. Again, John Deere, John Deere will be kicking things off Thursday night at the pavilion. We are providing some misters for, for that evening because it's going to be a blistering hot day, so they will kick off Thursday, and then Friday, of course, will be Mercado Night, and then Saturday will be the balance of the event with the fireworks. So come one, come all, it's going to be a great event. It was a great event last year, we had nearly 45,000 attendees, so this is, you know, and it's free, other than what you drink and what you eat. So by all means, let your family and your friends know. And I also apologize for that interruption.
No, I just needed to pause everything, it's, it all worked out, you can all do, it can work all the time.
It's all good, it's all good.
Any other staff updates? No? Okay. I need, any further public comments, Chief?
No worries about that.
Okay. And Ms. Murphy?
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition 5 ILCS 120/2C5, intending probable or imminent litigation - 5 ILCS 120/2C11.
Second.